Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Muskegon City Commission Meeting for April 24th, 2018. Before we begin our deliberations, I'd like to invite up Pastor Darren Longmire from Forest Park Covenant Church to lead us in prayer, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor, great to see you again.
Let us go to God in prayer. Father, we thank you, Lord, for this great opportunity that you've given us, Lord. We can meet together and we can make decisions together, Lord, and we just ask, Father, that you would be in the midst. Lord, you tell us in your word, where there are two or three gathered in your name, touching and agreeing, you will be there. So we ask, Lord, that whatever issues or things that are on the docket foot this evening, Father, we ask that you would be here and that you would show yourself mighty, that you would touch our hearts, Lord, that we would all be on one accord at the end. Father God, we thank you for your presence and your love. We thank you for this council, Lord. We thank you for the City of Muskegon, that you would continue to be with us, Lord, and continue to grow us, unite us, Father God, as we live together in this city. We thank you, Lord, again, for this great opportunity. It's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Galvin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Commissioner Rensselaer-Simpiga?
Here.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Is there anyone here from women injured in combat?
Nope. Skip it.
May we have the consent agenda, please?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk, summary requests. To approve minutes of the April 9th, 2018 work session meeting and the April 10th, 2018 regular meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Amendment to the zoning ordinance, planning and economic development, summary requests. Staff initiated request to amend section 2005-10, urban residential context area of the form-based code to allow nonprofit supportive housing as a special use permitted in certain building types and to allow home-based businesses as a principal use permitted in certain building types. Staff recommendation to approve the zoning ordinance amendment. Procurement of turbid meters, Department of Public Works and Water Filtration Plant. Summary request, authorize staff to procure new turbid meters from hatch to replace old and obsolete turbid meters at the water filtration plant. Staff recommendation, staff is authorized to purchase from hatch at the water filtration plant at a cost of $57,118.80. Ottawa Bridge Resolution of Support for Bridge Funding Application and Commitment for Matching Funds, Department of Public Works. Summary request, the engineering department would like to apply for critical bridge funding through the Michigan Department of Transportation. These funds would be used to replace the Ottawa Bridge, which was constructed in 1929 and is currently in very poor condition. Construction is estimated at $1,374,000, and the city would be required to provide matching funds of approximately $300,000 plus engineering cost. Funding is available starting in 2021. The MDOT application requires a resolution of support and commitment for the matching funds. Staff recommendation, approve the resolution of support for the critical bridge fund applications and commit to funding the required match and engineering costs.
Commissioners, you have heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further discussion? Commissioner Warren?
Seeing none, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner German to accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaer-Simpiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Public hearings, please.
Public hearing for the 2018 Action Plan, Community Neighborhood Services. Summary request, to conduct a public hearing on April 24th, 2018 to receive comments from the public concerning the 2018 action plan developed by the Community Neighborhood Services Department. After the public hearing, all comments received during the 30-day comment period, April 15th through May 14th, will be documented and included in the plan as required. Staff recommendation, to direct staff to gather comments from the public and to submit the 2018 Action Plan to HUD after the public comment period.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Bailey.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to remind everyone that we are back again. I guess I shouldn't have spoke. We are back again. Each year, we present a new plan for the upcoming year, and so that plan is on our website. We have one in the clerk's office, in our office. Our Citizens District Council will be meeting next Tuesday, and you're welcome to come to that as we discuss some of the staff-proposed changes or potential new activities. So at any time that you have a question, you can feel free to call our office at 724-6717, and we'll be happy to explain this process and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Bailey regarding the action plan? Are there any members of the public that would like to address this issue of the 2018 action plan? If not, Vice Mayor?
I move to close the public hearing and direct staff to gather comments from the public and to submit. The 2018 Action Plan to HUD after the public comment period. Support.
It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, supported by Commissioner Johnson, to close the public hearing and direct staff to gather comments from the public and to submit the 2018 Action Plan to HUD after the public comment period. Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaer-Simpiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. New business, please.
Concurrent of the Housing Board of Appeals Notice in Order to Demolish the Following Public Safety, 577 Amity, 1335th Street. Summary request, this is to request that the City Commission concur with the findings of the Housing Board of Appeals that the structures are unsafe, substandard, a public nuisance, and that they be demolished within 30 days. It is further requested that administration be directed to obtain bids for the demolition of the structures and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized and directed to execute a contract for demolition with the lowest responsible bidder, or staff may issue infraction tickets to the owner, agent, or responsible party if they do not demolish the structure. Staff recommendation to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals' decision to demolish.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak on 577 Amity Avenue? Is there anyone here to speak on 1335th Street? Commissioner German?
I move to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals' decision to demolish 577 Amity Avenue, 1335th Street.
Support. It's been moved by Commissioner German, supported by Commissioner Johnson, to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals. Notice in Order to Demolish 577 Amity Avenue and 1335th. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaer-Simpiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Any other business?
Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, opt-in, opt-out discussion, no action requested, planning, economic development.
Okay. Sure, and Mike's here too to answer any questions that everybody might have on the topic. If you recall, this is a carryover from a number of meetings, I guess not just meeting in March, February, but I think we met a number of times and talked about this. What you'll see in front of you in your packet is essentially the same ordinance, zoning ordinance that, and licensing ordinance that were presented to you guys a couple months ago, and I think commissioners want a little bit of time to attend a couple functions and talk to some more community members. In the meantime, we've kind of worked on a, what we would consider a, application for facilities, facility or license applicants to fill out in order to be considered for a license. You guys should have received a copy of that via email and a hard copy in front of you. We're not necessarily asking for that to be approved, yes or no, today. That would, it's something that would be useful or used if we do decide to opt in. I guess I'll cut right to the quick. From a staff standpoint, we will be recommending an opt-in to the Licensing Act for a number of reasons, but mostly because we think it's probably the most prudent way, one, to manage the industry as it comes into the community, and two, the likelihood that we would probably see what we see in Grand Rapids now, which is a citizen initiative to just to encourage or force the opt-in anyway. So this will give us a chance to be a little more proactive and kind of give us some time to see how everything works for us, the good and the bad, and then revisit those things over time, whether they're, you know, one year from now or six months from now, and kind of address the things that aren't working for us. I'll let Mike talk a little bit about, I think there were some questions about whether or not that we stackable and how we might want, how we might want them to be able to coexist, I guess, on the same property, and I'll let Mike talk to some of the changes that we're going to be recommending from an operational standpoint if we do end up opting in. So unless you have questions for me, I'll turn that over to Mike and let him just talk about those couple of things.
Any questions for Frank off the bat before we hand it over to Mike? transit?
All right. So staff put together this application that you would have to go through in order to receive a license. You would allow stacking of facilities. We also amended the map from what we had previously done. It's the same boundaries as before, but we've decided to allow all uses into the overlay district instead of separating them. We feel that there's a couple buildings, vice versa, in each area that would work better for the other that was preventing it, so we just decided to allow those both to happen, and that way you could also stack these as well. And then, it starts off with a background check, which is pretty common for these type of applications. Also, proof of the business responsibility would be step two, just making sure that they have rights to the property, any type of insurance policies that they have, acknowledgement and consent to, rural compliance, pretty standard stuff like that. Then you move on to step three, which is kind of the application, which calls for a number of different plans, a security plan, an outreach plan to reach out to the neighbors so that there's contact information if anybody sees anything or needs to get ahold of the business owner, a site plan. Also, in the site plan, if you look in the back, it shows an appendix to some examples for things that we're looking at, a building facade improvement plan, and that goes towards the zoning ordinance that was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission for building upgrades and requirements, sort of like a form-based code for this district, a charitable plan, which we've seen other communities request as well, a waste disposal plan, order and elimination plan, also something the ordinance requires, a carbon filtration system, and how often those filters would be changed. That is something we've had some complaints with, very few complaints, but a couple recently with some of the caregivers noticing some orders, but as soon as they change the carbon filtration filters, then that seems to eliminate it. So we want to make sure that those are always going to be updated as necessary. A blight elimination plan, which would address certain things on-site that aren't necessarily called out by the zoning ordinance. This would make sure that the buildings and all the light poles and everything are freshly painted with no chips or cracking, windows in good condition, parking lot in good condition with no potholes or asphalt cracks, fencing in good condition, and any dumpsters to be screened. A customer plan, which would talk about how they'll enter the building, if there's any buzzers or locks or waiting rooms associated with the building, and how they'll enter and leave, and how they'll carry their product out without being too noticeable. An employment plan for hiring procedures and diversity inclusion, anticipated employment levels and hours of operation, and the number of anticipated employees on different shifts. Also, for secure transporters, also evidence of their fleet and their proof of insurance and vehicle registration. So these are the things that would need to be approved before we could approve the application.
Questions for Mike? Commissioner Warren?
At this point, is it, are there any license quantities anticipated for each, you know, 25 of growing A, anything like that?
No, we don't have a cap or anything.
Not for any of them?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner German?
If these facilities was actually up and running, do they have a plan or action plan, I should say, to keep this medical marijuana out of the hands of citizens under 21 age?
Well, that would all be tied to the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, which dictates, I don't know if it's 18 or 21, 18?
Is it 18 or 21?
So they would have to comply with that for their state application.
Okay. And you mentioned transport now. Even actually, I believe under that law, that act that the state approved, when transporting, they can actually transport that marijuana through actually other cities that actually have opted out. So have we even considered that also?
If they'll be driving through a city?
Yeah.
That's not something we've addressed, where it'll be tracking.
But that's in the law. Yeah, so. Just a question, yeah, just a question.
Are you talking about?
When it's transporting?
Are you talking about people from outside the city transporting into our city, or us transporting outside?
Us transporting outside, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure. I mean, maybe I'll speak out of turn here, but I would say, you know, our real goal here is to worry about what's going on in our boundaries and, you know, and when we're going to license that, and we're going to pay attention to that, and those are the things that, you know, I don't know if we can, how hard or easy it would be to figure out if, you know, if transporter A is moving things from here to northern shores or another city, and whether that's necessarily our responsibility to police or the other community's responsibility to police. I'm not really sure where that, you know, where that.
And what we're doing is we're licensing the transporting facility to be located in the city. So I don't, I don't know, you know, if they can drive through a city that doesn't allow it. Just because another city wouldn't allow a license, I don't, I don't know if that has any ramifications on actually driving through it with the product.
Right. Just something I read, so I just wanted to get some clarification on that also.
I would kind of agree with Mike. We're approving a facility or not approving a facility. The action, whether a person buys it in one of our facilities and takes it home to another community, or whether it's transported there to a somebody in the other community, I don't think that that's necessarily, you know, our concern here. Our concern is whether or not we're going to allow those facilities to operate within our city. Thank you. Commissioner Rensselaer-Simpiga?
I'm just wondering what other permits we have or things that require this many plans to like get your whatever business or establishment up and running. It just seems like this is a little bit more than we require for most other things. It strikes me as a little bit, and I don't know if it's just because it's new, so we're like, oh, well, we'll just pile on here, but, you know, I don't know. I mean, like a charitable plan, that sounds like, you know, what should we do with the casinos or something like that, but I don't really know of too many other businesses that, you know, have to demonstrate how they're going to do things like that.
Well, I think for the most part, most of the plans required in here are things that have been brought to our attention by either planning commissioners or city commissioners. The charitable one, I would think, is just meeting with the companies. I believe everyone that has stated they want to do business has talked about giving back to the community, so we figure it's one thing to say it, but if we're gonna, if everyone's willing to say it, then we may as well have a requirement for it.
Yeah, if I could chime in on that too. We started this idea of maybe we would have kind of like a point system and then have a threshold where people could say, like, say, there was, there were up to 100 points could be earned on all these different criterias, and if you got up to, some communities were saying, you know, they were going to do the point system, and then they were going to have a limited number, and then only give them to the highest point-getters, for example. Because we weren't limiting them, we thought that maybe we would at least be able to set a threshold and say, okay, there's, there's a lot of ways to operate this business, and a lot of different ways you can, you can be a good neighbor, a good community member, and earn points. So say we had 100 points, and then we said, well, just to get in the, just to get approval, you had to get maybe a 75 or 80 or certain amount of points. But when we really started looking at that, we thought it was really difficult for us and became very subjective to say, okay, on this criteria, did you meet it all? Did you get 15 or 14 or 13 or 12? And so all the things that we were anticipating using as almost like a point system, we just turned into plans. So some of them seemed kind of funny, but that's why when you even see the charitable plan, you know, we didn't want to make people be charitable at all. So we said, well, but if you read on here, it says, you can do as little as a dollar. You know, I mean, it's very clear in here that we're not, if they want to just give us a plan that says, hey, we're going to give a dollar to, you know, to have, you know, to the program, then that qualifies them as turning in a charitable plan. We just, we heard from a lot of them that came in to us at staff level and said, this is why you should approve my company, because this is what we do in the community, and then this is what we do, and this is what we do. It seemed like to be a foundation for a number of the companies, and seemed to be very important to them, and so that's why we put it in there. Does it have to be in there? I don't, I don't think so. But some of them were trying to use that as something that set them apart from the others.
I'm sorry if I could just follow up, but just see, so, I just worry about, you know, if we're doing it in this, then where does it end? And, you know, and I just think it's kind of a little bit picking winners and losers, and I agree, I think it's a bad idea to try and award points, because frankly, I see this as mostly marketing, and, you know, writing plans is a skill at writing and presenting more than it is in executing things a lot of times. So I just, you know, I guess my biggest concern is that, you know, there's other things that are objectionable to people, and there's other times when businesses, you know, these are frankly businesses, so we're talking about business operations. You know, I think we want them to obey the rules and that's, you know, be within the system that they're licensed or whatever, set up to do, but I just worry about some of these people saying, well, why don't we apply this to other things, people who come to the city that are looking for business permits, or tax abatements, or liquor licenses, or every, any number of things. I'm not sold on, you know, all of these plans as being part of it. So I think that there should be some more discussion about what is exactly necessary, and, you know, at what point do we see this, you know, do we see any other further ramifications?
One of the things I was talking to with Commissioner Johnson, he asked some of the same questions about, so we're going to require this type of landscaping around, you know, on the parking lots, or these sorts of things. And I think the only one that kind of sticks out is the charitable one, which, from a staff standpoint, we could take it or leave it, but the other ones, I think, are kind of important. When you're looking at, you know, kind of, you know, one of the goals from a staff standpoint is why we picked that area, was because we thought the industry could really help lift that area up, and we want to make sure that it does. But one of the concerns, we heard from some of the patients, were that we were sticking it in a part of town that wasn't as desirable for people to go and spend time in. And so the thought was, as we require these businesses to clean up and fix up and eliminate the blade and make sure that it's a, that it's a good experience, you know, from the outside of the buildings before you even walk into them, it'll help us, you know, help us justify why we picked that area and why we have them in that area, and help people realize that it's, you know, or at least help people feel more comfortable going specifically into that area, and they look at it now and they don't see it as a comfortable place. But we want to make sure that we don't put the industry there and that it stays an uncomfortable place. We want to make sure that if we picked this area, if the goal was that the area gets lifted up and becomes, you know, a bright spot in the neighborhood. We can't necessarily guarantee that unless we have like the requirements in here for, and I kind of, we said all along that we would come up with like, kind of like a form-based code for that area, and I kind of look at most of these things as kind of being similar to what we make happen down on Western Avenue. For example, when you do a parking lot on Western Avenue, we make them put a, you know, a wall around it, and people can sit on it and, you know, and spend time there, and we make the people pay a lot more attention to the exterior of the things that they're building and the things that they're doing down there. I guess the one step in the direction here that would be different than that is, we're going to ask them to do it even if they reuse an existing, you know, an existing building, whereas we might not have that downtown. We'll let them, if they have a parking lot here, we'll ask them to bring it up to that standard, whereas we wouldn't necessarily be able to do that, I don't think, in the form-based code.
Well, and some of these things are physical-type things, and those are typical, I think, to codes, but some of them are not, like, you know, the outreach plan, the customer plan, the employment plan, those are, those are a little bit more not so much typical to like what we do. So I'm wondering if there's a separation between like the physical stuff and the other more, you know, people relation or something like that.
Okay. You know, this is kind of new. I mean, it's newer for us, it's probably newer for a lot of the, a lot of the communities. And I think you might find that over time, the things that we ask become less relevant and less relevant and less relevant once it becomes more, I don't want to say more mainstream, but right now, I know that it seems like there's a lot of support for it, but there also is a lot of apprehension or just of the unknown. And I think having these in there to show, to show, you know, whether they're cardholders or just people in the neighborhood, that, you know, this is how it's going to operate, these are the hours it's going to operate, just so people get a really good, you know, good, you know, comfort level with there, because they are new here in Muskegon. Stuff like order elimination, you know, we've seen those be problems, you know, in current operations here in our, in our community. But also, we see the traffic sometimes being a problem too, and so we want to make sure the things that we've learned, you know, the things that people call about, things that people complain about, you know, if we have a chance to address them now before they become a problem in this area, the thought is, let's try to do it now, and, you know, and if we find out that, you know, the customer plan or the employment plan even are, you know, are not as necessary in the future, then we can kind of stop asking for them. It might be more difficult to, you know, to approve a lot of them now and then decide, oh, no, we really should have talked about how they were, how the customers were going to get in and out in a safe, efficient manner, because once they're all built out and operating, it'd be really hard to make those changes. Vice Mayor?
You mentioned, you know, we're here to vote on opting in and out, and you mentioned at the beginning, if we opt in, we'd have some type of control or try to get ahead of this. If you opt out, don't you still have some type of control? I'm just wondering, what, when you opt out, what do you lose?
I would say if we opted out, the big thing that we would lose would be, like I said, the head start. I fully expect that, and I think we've heard from some, from one commissioner at least, that, you know, there are citizens that fully intend to do a petition drive if we don't opt in, and we'll probably be, we'll probably end up opted in, whether we do it up here or we do it, or it happens at the voting booth. And so from my standpoint, it allows us to kind of, to get, get in front of the, I don't want to say in front of the industry, but be, you know, be a leader and, and make our own, make the rules and enforce the rules and understand the rules before it's kind of thrust upon us, like, just like, you know, medicinal marijuana was in 2008 with no, with no rules or regulations known.
So actually, we do have some, some type of control even if you opt out and it does come?
Yeah.
Okay. I've been to different seminars and heard different things, so I'm just trying to clear this up in my mind, and maybe someone else's mind that's out there listening.
Yeah. We could still have control at a later date, if you're trying to do that. Commissioner German?
Yeah, a question from Mike. Looking at the
Looking at the map here, the proposed MMFLA district, I'm looking at B4. Now, that starts at Lathan, now, that's actually where some of those dispensaries can be set up at correctly within that district also?
Yeah, anywhere within the green would allow any of the five licenses.
Okay. Now, how far is that? Because that's a drug-free zone. A part of it is, it's pretty close to Muskegon High School and that area should be, how far does the drug-free zone go? What's that?
It's well over 1,000 feet away from the high school.
Yeah. So, so it has to be at least 1,000 feet to be considered?
I don't think that's even in the MMFLA, to my knowledge, but I know that sometimes that's things that cities look at to be away from for certain uses. So, I think that's generally the distance that's used in ordinances. I haven't seen anything more than 1,000 feet for, for most things, but it's, yeah, it's over 1,000 feet from the high school and from Muskegon Heights High School as well, even though it's a different jurisdiction.
Right, right. Of course, from Muskegon Heights.
And the distance to Moon, Moon might be the only one that might be.
Yeah. And that goes back to the first question I asked. The prevention from student 18th, you know, I thought it was 21, but 18 having access to marijuana. We do know that there is a higher usage of marijuana now in high school and to be in that area, I think that would give them greater access to it because I'm finding out more of them are actually getting medical marijuana cards, which specifically legalizes them to smoke if they're 18 or 21. And that's one of my main concerns of them having access to, you know, a facility within that district.
I mean, I, I guess that's maybe more of a discussion on the state-level approach of, of what should be issued. You know, we can't do anything about a legal 18-year-old with a card going, going in there or not.
But we could zone that where it'd be there. We, you know, that's an option also.
We could zone it completely on the other side of the city, but I, I would have to guess that they would find access over there if they really wanted to.
Right. But we know smokers that's gonna use marijuana are gonna get it regardless of what we put in place, but just making it visible, you know, they can't leave the school, walk down there, you know, a few blocks and say, hey, you know, here's my card, you know, come back to school, you know, become a hazard, a liability in the school and then, then we have another problem, you know? So, I think not having it actually accessible, you know, within a school district or close to a school district would make a, a big difference, in my opinion.
But, you know, right now, chances are you're gonna have caregivers that are, you know, already in our neighborhoods and an individual at age 18 with a legitimate, you know, laracard is legitimately procuring their substance.
Right.
And, you know, at a state level, you know, if they're doing anything hanky outside of that, then, you know, they, they have to, you know, you know, face any consequences.
Exactly.
But nobody else can just walk to a caregiver now, nor can they, if, if this goes forward, could be able to get in the door and, you know, purchase anything unless they're a legitimate patient.
Right. And ones that's under 18 is basically definitely my concern.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Just, just to follow up on that, that final conversation, so, you know, Mayor noted that this is legitimate need and get a card to access your medicine and no one under 18 is able to get that card or be able to enter into the provisioning center. And the public generally would not be entering any of the other facilities, you know, like the, the growing or the processing or the safe transport or the, the testing, safety compliance testing. So, we wouldn't be seeing public access to those buildings. The only one would be the provisioning center, in which case you'd have to present your identification and that you are a patient needing to access your medicine. And as the, the mayor noted, we don't have restrictions on caregiver right now, so we permit caregivers to set up operation throughout the city. There's not a restriction if you are near this type of property or that type of property, the caregiver already is existing there. Same thing with patient growers. If a patient happens to live across the street from a high school, by law, they're enabled to grow for their own needs. With the medical marijuana facilities is, is improving how patients can access it and that the quality of the medication that they receive and the types of medication they receive. And so, and then also, just to, to provide the safe transport that you mentioned earlier, ultimately, there's, that's, that's enforceable by the state. So, the, the seed-to-sale system, the state's monitoring that and all of the facilities have to account for every step of that, of the medicine so that it's not being diverted, just as you are, you know, rightfully concerned. We don't want any youth abusing medicine, whether it's marijuana that's medicine or whether it's opioids that's medicines and oxycontin. We don't want that, just, but because of that concern, we don't necessarily restrict pharmacies from operating, you know, within nearby a park or nearby a school. So, I got a couple, a few questions as well, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Carry on.
Thank you. So, one, one, I just say I'd appreciate this application process. Several of these plans are required in the ordinance if it were to pass, but I think it's very helpful to have on the actual application so it's quite obvious and evident to anyone that's applying that, hey, you need to have a security plan, you need to have wasted soda plan, odor elimination control plan. So, I think it's good to be on there. I did share Commissioner Rinsmuss's concerns a bit about some of these things that, you know, aren't required in the ordinance, but it looks like we're requiring via this application process that go well above and beyond what we require any other business to do in the city. So, I do have some concerns about what seemingly is a, a double standard for how we treat this type of business versus these other types of businesses. However, I think it is important, I think what you did here did try to address some of the concerns that we had at our work session in March and, and some of the tweaks we were talking about and, you know, the social equity aspect of it. And I see that kinda reflected here and so I do appreciate that. I'm just not sure if we need to require it and mandate every aspect of it, particularly the charitable plan. I don't think it's, I don't even know if it's legally permissible to mandate that you be charitable in order to operate your business. I think it's something that we should encourage and if we can find a way to incentivize that or if there is some kind of scoring for some of these non-mandatory items, you know, such as the outreach plan, I think it's great if, if we can get an outreach plan. Building facade improvement plan, I think that's great as well. Charitable plan, great. I'm saying the light elimination plan, employment plan, you know, are you, do you have an equal opportunity policy in employment? Are you hiring city residents? Customer plan. I think those are all great things. I'm just not certain about mandating them. If we could find another way to incorporate them, to encourage that and maybe that does have some kind of point, point system to do that and doing it as objectively and quantifiably as possible, not just, here's 10 points and we don't indicate how we award those 10 points, but be a little bit more quantifiable in how we're awarding points in that regard. So, I would welcome, you know, your further work on this and being brought back for us to reconsider down the road. And I'll admit, I was a bit disappointed, as you probably saw with my email with Frank, that, you know, this wasn't at our April work session. Because when we met at the March work session and gave this input about tweaking it, we wanted to see it at our April work session so that we could vote tonight. And so, and that's what I'd been communicating to, to the public, so I was a little frustrated that it wasn't actually on our agenda with the action requested with the staff recommendation. However, I understand we can still take action on the underlying ordinance. This permitting process can be done separately. So, so I appreciate that at least. And we may end up going that route still tonight. But I just wanted to give you some feedback about my thoughts on this and I, and I do appreciate Commissioner Rinsmuss's thoughts on that as well. Oh, one thing, though, for the customer plan, I would like to see it incorporate handicap accessibility as well. And a lot of the patients are gonna have, many of these patients are gonna have handicap or disability issues and so encouraging that either their site plan or their customer plan incorporates that and, and one, obviously follow federal law with regard to ADA because if these are publicly accessible businesses, they need to be following that law, but it'd be good to have that, you know, on, with us, a plan with us as well.
Yeah, that's a good point because some of these buildings may be grandfathered in for retail without any ramps or anything, which wouldn't constitute a change of use, but having it in the ordinance would probably be our way to require that.
Okay. Yeah, I would very much welcome that. Then I've got a question for legal counsel. I don't know, I asked you this earlier today and I don't know if you had a chance to look at the, the zoning ordinance that was recommended by planning, but you've seen the map now here and it's basically the exact same geographic area that the planning commission considered for the two overlay districts. And now staff is encouraging or recommending that it be combined into a single district with the exact same geographic area permitting all five licenses, not one with five and one with three. So, would we be able to, since there's already been a recommendation on the exact same geographic area, do you think that we can approve the single district with the exact same geographic area with five licenses or will likely have to go back to the planning commission?
I can't answer that question. I have not seen the recommendation from the planning commission or the discussion that occurred, the recitation of what was discussed there, contemplated, the discussion between the planning commissioners, et cetera. You know, as we previously talked, it may well be that what occurred in front of the planning commission was sufficient to flush out that this then, this change that you're then making tonight or in two weeks or whenever was sufficiently vetted in front of the planning commission. I just don't know that. I've not seen those documents. Does, no, I guess the other thing to keep in mind, you are not bound by the, the planning commission's decision or actually their recommendation. You can ignore it, you can expand it, et cetera. The analogy, I would say, is if the planning commission was considering the rezoning of a piece of property at the corner of Apple and First and that was all the discussion and they decided to do, you know, not exact, you decide to do something slightly different with the property at Apple and First, not a big deal. If what comes to you is a discussion at Apple and First and you decide, hey, let's do the same thing out at Getty and Sherman, my opinion would be no. That's a different location, different notice requirements, et cetera, et cetera.
Mm-hmm.
I just haven't seen those documents.
Okay. Yeah, that was gonna be exactly my next question because, yeah, that was my understanding is that we're not bound by the planning commission recommendations, simply recommending. And given that same analogy, I would personally conclude, I'm not a lawyer, but just logically conclude that we would be permitted to approve this, this single district with five licenses since it's the exact same area that had been under consideration previously. And I think Frank, as you mentioned earlier, that notices weren't sent out, they weren't necessarily to be sent out in this case with the overlay districts. So, there's not a need to have to resend out notices in that regard. But then my question is, can the underlying amendment to the code of ordinances, that can be approved without the zoning ordinance at the same time?
Please note that section 34.205, Fran 1, indicates that you can have these growers, et cetera, et cetera, in those locations, subject to the requirements of the city's zoning ordinance. So, until the zoning ordinance is adopted, while the, I'm gonna call it the police powers ordinance, will be effective, but nobody will be able to go to a place and say, okay, here's where I want it.
Okay.
Here's my plan, where I want to go.
So, we could adopt the code, the amendment to the code of ordinance, giving direction to the, the community and public as large that that's how our intent is to move forward and no activity can actually happen there until the zoning is adopted.
Correct.
And in tandem, we can work on finalizing the application process as well. Okay. That's good to know. Thank you.
Commissioner Moore?
Part of what I have learned over the past several months, both in the community conversation and doing research nationwide, is the issue with equity in this industry. And while our hands are tied in some ways, we can't at a local level expunge records, say you don't need a background check or those types of things, I hope we'll get the chance to explore some of the plans and explore some of the more creative ways. And I think the charitable plan might be one of those more creative ways to address social equity. And I know some have voiced, in other communities, people come in and make a lot of money and then they leave. And I don't mean they leave, they fly the coop. I mean, they, they drive down the street to a different community that they live in and invest there. So, I think whether it's the charitable plan or the outreach plan or some of these other things, I hope we'll be able to explore some of those more creative ways at a local level that we can do our best to be more equitable in this, in this industry. When it comes to these plans, we had talked about at a different time, the possibility of perhaps having a medical marijuana commission that could review these plans or be involved with the license issuing process. Is that something that is, has there been further dialogue or thought among staff?
Not really, but the more people on it to review, to take pressure off the staff, I would, I would welcome that.
Yeah, that, that's something that I know other communities have and, and utilize and I have seen some, I'm sure you can fashion it, whether you want different wards represented. There's some, the way that the historic district commission requires certain expertise, you can require certain industry experts and so it might be something to explore further. That wouldn't impact the ordinance, obviously, but when it comes to these plans or, or having more input.
Commissioner Johnson?
I would say that I'm not keen on the commissioner review board personally. My concern there is the potential for politics to get in the way of who gets permits and who doesn't, potential for corruption to get in the way of who gets permits and who doesn't of the members on that board. We don't have commissions and board of review set up for giving any other businesses permits. So, I guess I just would be concerned if we are gonna create this entity that has authority over who gets permitting, who doesn't. I would refer it to be more objective, quantifiable. We do, I, I take your concerns about promoting social equity absolutely to heart and I would like this, this application process to incorporate that to as great of an extent as possible, for sure. I'm just personally not keen on a, a commissioner board necessarily determining who is getting permitted.
I would say with our first go-around with this, when we had a point system, you know, maybe that would be a little more valuable to me to not have to come up with the scoring by myself, but the way it's written now, I think it's pretty easy to tell if you're meeting the requirements under every plan, there's certain thresholds you have to meet. It should be pretty easy to tell whether they're meeting them or not, so.
And if I could add, maybe as a compromise, too, we could talk about more like an appeals body if we're denying one.
Okay.
That somebody really feels like they should have been approved at least and then we're only talking about, you know, looking at those few that, you know, that there's a problem, you know, with, and that might be a little easier to get people to, you know, to volunteer stand-ups, like the zoning board of appeals or the, or do like a demo of house or something like that.
Yeah, I'd be receptive to that, a committee to process appeals and review appeals and make sure that we've got citizens reflective across our city on that. Yeah, I think that's a good point. Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea. Might that be a happy medium, Commissioner Warren? I don't know.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to hopefully more dialogue on all of this, when it comes to the nitty-gritty details.
Commissioner German?
Yeah, I, just once, I agree with Commissioner Warren. When it comes to equity, portion of making decision on a move like this, definitely having some type of community benefit where the community, the community benefits from actions such as this or this decision. So just looking at it from a holistic approach, going back to the eighties and seventies, when you had this war on drugs, there are many people right now riding in jails, especially persons of color that, you know, have been, you know, convicted now, you know, legalizing, you know, marijuana. And, you know, to me, you just can't play both sides of the coin. So, I mean, you know, opt-in, I know we're talking about having access to, you know, medical marijuana, you know, for the patients, and, don't get me wrong, I'm all for that. You know, I think these patients have the right to have access to marijuana, medical marijuana, I should say. And definitely, it has to be, you know, regulated to a fact where, you know, there's no criminal, you know, activities or anything like that. So, but I'd like to see more discussion on, you know, ways that the, the community can benefit from this, and how, you know, we can, as a city, could, you know, have money come back to our neighborhoods, you know, for education, you know, infrastructure and stuff like that, but also jobs for people in the community also. And that's something that, you know, I have not, you know, heard this really body talk about, you know, how we, the city, if we opt-in, how we're going to benefit, how our citizens and our community would benefit from. Because we know people are going to come in, make money, I mean, you know, the bottom line is revenue, we know that, so that's no secret. But the city has to come first. I was elected to, you know, serve as a commissioner, to, you know, serve the city of Muskegon, the constituents, and do what's in the best interest for our city, so.
Yeah, that's, that's something we did try to address with the diversity inclusion in the employment plan, also with the charitable plan, money's going back into the neighborhood. But if you have any other ideas that we could try to include, we'd be receptive to that.
Right. And just of course, I mean, just to your point too, Ken, when, you know, I mentioned, you know, kids under 18 having access to, you know, marijuana, you know, if you look at it realistically, you know, alcohol and liquor is legal in Michigan, but those kids under 21, 18, have access to alcohol. So my concern is, it could happen with this as well. So, you know, I just want to have some stiff, you know, regulations to make sure that we do what we can, if this was the past, you know. Right now, I'm still not sold on it, because I just think it's too many unknowns, you know, we haven't had enough discussion on how, you know, we would move forward. We've heard discussions from, you know, I've heard discussions from some citizens, you know, even in the Lansing area, I was down there. If you go down Cedar Street, back then, they had dispensaries all down the street, north and south, you know. So I don't want to look like a conglomerate, where we have dispensaries all over our city, you know, and particularly in the urban areas, you know. And I just think that, you know, it would be a disservice for our community, you know. But having access to this medical marijuana, again, I'm saying that the patients, you know, I'm all for that, you know, so I don't want no one to get the wrong ideals, thinking that I'm not, you know, in favor of these patients having access to medical marijuana.
Commissioner?
And I certainly appreciate your concerns in that regard, Commissioner German, of not having youth get access to this, or anyone abusing medicine, for sure. And I do welcome further discussion and dialogue on how we can improve the application process in terms of incorporating more of social equity aspects. We talked about it at a fair amount of length at our March work session, and I think staff have done, has taken strides to reflect that discussion in this application process. And not only in terms of, you know, if we were to move forward with the ordinance of accommodating patients, but we, given the people that have come forward as interested in setting up medical marijuana facilities, and how they want them to operate, and the amount of money they want to put into it, and the indications to give back to the community, I see it as a win-win situation, I guess, on multiple levels, not only in us better accommodating our patients, but also investments in our urban core, in our, in our city. And the alternative is if we don't move forward with an opt-in ordinance, and this continues to drag out or languish, is that a citizens initiative appears in the ballot box, and that permits provisioning centers all over the city. As you were just concerned, you didn't want it to happen, whereas this ordinance currently confines it into a relatively smaller area of our city, whereas a citizens initiative could have those facilities in many different parts of our city. Some of our citizens may actually want it. I've heard that from many of our citizens, and going to the neighborhood associations, from Marquette to Beachwood Bluffton, east to west, everything in between, I've heard from many of our citizens, like, well, why would you confine it to just this one area, an industrial park? Why not have it in more places? So I think our citizens probably would welcome that improvement, but I think it's important to move forward, and we can always tweak the ordinance down the road, but I think, I appreciate staff's recommendation to get ahead of this and have our city show progressive leadership on this, in terms of accommodating our patients.
Commissioner?
I have a question, maybe for legal counsel, about citizen initiative. Is that possible for a citizen initiative to define zoning and other condition, licensing conditions?
The general, excuse me, the general answer is that zoning usually is not subject to initiative, it is subject to a referendum. Having said that, there have been a number of proposals that have been put in front of the public that have been voted on, that sidestepped that issue by not regulating, by not dealing with the zoning issue.
So where it's permitted and types of things?
It's any place. Where you have made a decision, or you haven't made a decision, you're considering making a decision, that you're going to limit by way of zoning where certain functions can be.
So if there was a citizen initiative or ballot question, and if it was yes or no, or I don't know what it would be, but, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't say where it was, then that would mean it's everywhere, just because that's what was passed?
Yep, or some minister has been faced with limitations on what the police and city staff can do if they find marijuana facilities that are open and operating, what the city attorney can do relative to those places. So they essentially take the regulation and deal with it in a very different manner.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Any action to be taken, Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While I would encourage more dialogue and welcome staff's input on how to further tweak the application process, and then welcome the commission considering deliberating on that and getting it to be as best as possible, I think we have discussed extensively the underlying amendment to our Code of Ordinances. So in that regard, we spent many scores of hours on that. So in that regard, I'm going to make a motion, so I move that we adopt the amendment to our Code of Ordinances with respect to Chapter 34, Article 4 of Code of Ordinances of the City of Muskegon, Michigan, Sections 34-201 through 34-208.
Support.
It's been moved by Commissioner Johnson, supported by Commissioner Warren, to adopt the amendment to our Code of Ordinances as outlined. Discussion?
To be clear, it does not include the proposed zoning ordinance.
Correct.
But it does not include...
Now, as I understand the motion.
Correct.
The proposed zoning ordinance.
And also to clarify, it has nothing to do with the application that we've been presented with. That's completely not, or however, it's not referenced, and it's not pertinent to these sections.
Right.
So we're not, we're not really debating any of that when we have a discussion about this motion.
Right.
I mean, however you want to define that.
So we're dealing with the...
And whatever's covered by the ordinance, yes.
Okay. Are we, are we clear? Are we good to go?
So we're...
I think so.
Okay. Okay. The Byron has a right to. Commissioner?
This vote is dealing with the opt-in or opt-out? Is that what we're voting on?
Ian, may I?
Please.
Ian, what I refer to as the police powers ordinance, as opposed to the zoning ordinance. If you look, your agenda has the first six pages, seven pages, deal with the ordinance Sections 34-201 through 208. After that, then is a proposed zoning ordinance with a map and an attachment. And then what was handed out tonight was the, was an application. And that's why I raised the question relative to Commissioner Johnson's motion. It only deals with Sections 34, Section 201 through 34-208. The motion was not to adopt the others. And I want to make sure everyone's on agreement on that.
Question?
Can the person making the motion speak? If I may, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that is correct. I made a motion to adopt just the amendment to the Code of Ordinances that enables us to opt-in to the Michigan Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act. The underlying zoning ordinance is not included at this time. I do not feel comfortable making that motion. If legal counsel cannot advise us that we can adopt that without first going to the Planning Commission. So I am comfortable with at least moving forward with the underlying amendment to the Code of Ordinances to reflect that our city is willing to opt-in, or is opting in, and that the zoning matter gets hashed out. Legal counsel could look into it, and maybe it does not need to go to the Planning Commission again, or maybe it does, and if so, so be it. Understanding that we adopt this ordinance tonight, it does not mean any facilities will, you know, tomorrow, next week, next month, be able to start operating until that zoning matter is squared away, and also, we get this application process finalized. What this is just reflecting is that our city is moving forward in this matter of opting in. We have talked at great length on this for many, many months. I've personally been working on this for a year now, and we've, as a, as a body, deliberative body, have been discussing this for over a half a year, at least, and had many, many conversations amongst ourselves and with the public. And that's why I think it's important to reflect that we are going to lead on this, we're going to move forward on this, give clarity to those that are interested in getting facilities set up in our city, so they can start planning and know, have some confidence that, in their investment in our city, and that our patients have confidence that we're going to basically serve their best interests, and also serve the will of the people, in my opinion. I know some of you do not give much credence to the 2008 ballot proposal on the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, but I will just reiterate that in that 2008 election, 57% of our voters went to the ballot box, and of that 57%, so over a majority of our voters went to the ballot box, and of that 57%, 74% favored medical marijuana. And nothing in my conversations with our citizens over many, many months makes me believe that the views have changed, or they no longer support, is widely supported in our city, amongst our citizens, to move forward with Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act opt-in. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner German?
Commissioner Johnson, I think that it'd have been good to have some, some discussions among the commission to move forward on this. You know, with the amendment, I would have felt more comfortable, you know, having time to ask questions, you know, consider some other things. Just because, or if the commission doesn't, you know, opt-in on this, this doesn't mean that they're not leading, they just taking precaution and, I think, looking at, you know, common sense issues that, you know, would actually help guide us, you know, through the process, to speak with maybe some consultants, or, you know, professionals that know more about, you know, the law, or, you know, than we do. Even with the, the Medical Marijuana Facilities Act, that, you know, I don't know, how many of you have read this, you know, on this commission? So I'm assuming that you've read it, I've read it. So I guess everybody on here knows everything and all the details, and feel confident enough enough to vote or opt-in on it, or opt-out. But if you haven't, I suggest you read it, you know. So that probably should help you make, you know, a pretty sound decision. If you don't know something, why vote on it? You know, if you don't have all the details. So that's, that's what I have to say.
Anything else, commissioners? Commissioner, this evening?
Question, so the ordinance doesn't say anything about the zoning, so how does the zoning play into it, then? Or maybe it does say something? I'm wondering how, what the step back is if we would adopt this?
What?
What, what references are there?
If I can draw your attention to Section 34-205, Prin 1.
Okay.
Provides that growers, processors, provisioning centers, safety compliance facilities, and secure transporters are permitted in those zones and subject to requirements provided for in the city's zoning ordinance. So if it's not permitted in the zoning ordinance, which at this point it isn't, then you could not open up such a facility.
Okay. So that's the, of all the things we're talking to, that's the reference to something external that's not being, or is not moved for approval with this motion, so?
Yeah, I think the other, the other comment I'd made, if you look at that same section and then Prins 2, also talks about other applicable written and duly promulgated standards.
Yep.
Depending how the application is adopted, if it's adopted by you versus as a staff decision, et cetera, may also impact that.
Okay. And then another question, I don't know, Commissioner Johnson mentioned, you know, that they wouldn't pop up tomorrow, they would still need to do this application and whatever, but they'd also need to be approved by the state, right?
Yes, yes.
So that's a completely different process that, even if we opt-in and say we want them, that doesn't mean that they're going, that anyone who applies to us is going to be able to operate if they meet our standards. There's another external license or whatever they have to receive.
They must be approved by the gods on high.
So, and as I understand, that process is moving forward slowly.
Very. Something like 285 in, and about five got approval this week.
Something like that.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Maybe it's six, as of today.
Anything else, commissioners?
Yeah, I guess, I don't know, this, I think that, you know, we do need to make a decision about this. I think we have discussed it for quite a long time, and we could wait longer, I suppose. We're, you know, we're slowly, I mean, this is a moving target, and I think we're slowly seeing how it's being rolled out in other communities, how the state's handling it. I think it's becoming slightly more apparent about what we're touching here, if you're, like, it's like the analogy with the elephant. I guess at this point, I've given, you know, a lot of thought, and I think, you know, a lot of our residents have, and there's been a lot of discussions about it in, you know, the business community. There's a lot of sides to this issue, and a lot of... There's a lot of sides to this issue and a lot of things to consider. I guess I'm leaning towards opting in. I definitely have some reservations about the, the, the system and in general, it's, it's a tough call. I mean, we're talking about moving what people think about things, so it's, there's a kind of a social aspect to this. So, so I, and I, I think, don't think we should ever, you know, stop and not change socially. I think that that's, that's okay, that, you know, we've done that on many issues. I, I do see some valid concerns from, you know, workforce side, and I, I think that there's, you know, I, I guess, I understand, I, I think that there's some validity of marijuana or THC or cannabis or whatever having medicinal qualities and, you know, but it's been treated very strangely over our history here in terms of legal regulation in the United States. So it kind of leaves us in a strange spot where it's not really, you know, it's a very, it's a very kind of outside the system medicine, and there's all kinds of other social components to it. So I, I guess I kind of understand those. I do think that, you know, as a medicine, in a limited way, there's definitely been things that are, seem to indicate that it can be helpful, but, you know, I frankly, I look at, I, I'm not no expert about it, but I, I feel like to some extent, the, the medical marijuana card system is somewhat abused just from what the stories I've heard and things I've read about it. And I do worry that, you know, we, and this is with all, a lot of things, with alcohol and opioids, that, you know, there are lots of ways to escape, you know, and this can be one of them, and I think we should be careful about that. So, and we're making decisions for the citizens and for our youth going into the future, I think we don't want to encourage things that, you know, I think we want to encourage things that are for their health and things like that, and, you know, be careful about what we encourage and even in, you know, kind of discreet ways, behavior that is not always, you know, you know, helping you keep a job or other things like that. But that's a whole nother tangent. I guess, so after a lot of thought about it, I, I guess I'm, I, I don't really want to comment on the zoning of it or the application. I still have some questions and concerns about that whole part of, if we would do that, but I guess I, I'm, you know, you know, come around or with some reservation, think that there's, there's definitely some, you know, the, the fact that medical marijuana is permitted and whether, you know, I don't know what the voters in 2008 said, whether it applies to exactly this ordinance or not, I'm not exactly sure, but I do think that there, you know, we have a caregiver system. I don't know, again, I think there's issues with that. I guess it seems like at this point, this is a, is an okay step to take for the, for this, you know, in my estimation for the city of Muskegon, so I guess I'm going to vote yes on this, but definitely with some, some concern and some things to definitely keep in mind as we watch how this develops in other, other areas and so that, I think it should definitely be in a controlled way so that we can easily change and see how, what, what kind of impacts it's having. So those are my thoughts on the matter.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Turnquist?
I just have to go along with the concerns that Dan just mentioned. My biggest concern, I know that medical marijuana has its, has its uses and helps many, many patients. I just don't think there are enough controls of how you get it. I think it's too easy to get, and the dispensing of marijuana in any type form, I'd like to see, you know, a prescription written, go to the drugstore, get it up. That, to me, is the ideal way to do it. I cannot go along with opting in. Someone said that there's a fear of, of a petition. If we opt out, that the citizens are going to do a petition. Well, so be it. I, I just can't go along with, with opting in. We're doing a disservice to our whole community, and that's my feelings on.
Okay. Aker, commissioner? Commissioner German?
No.
Oh, okay. I, I agree with Commissioner Turnquist and to the fact with Commissioner Msivenga, with your concerns and, you know, listening to you, there were some concerns of unknowns, and that's the whole reason why, you know, I wasn't sold on opting in. I think that the question that Vice Mayor Hood asks, whether we opt in and out or not, that doesn't stop us from having control. So, I mean, I don't see any reason why we should rush to make a decision to opt in. I mean, because, as I said, you know, some of you haven't even read, you know, the whole, you know, state law, but you want to make a decision on something you don't know about, you know? So, I mean, some things can come back to bite you, but that's your vote, you know? So, and respectfully, whoever decides to vote the way they do, that's, you know, that's their decision. My decision is, I, like I said, I'm not sold and I'm, I will not opt in on this decision.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments, closing statements? Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regard to, if I may, you know, with all due respect, Commissioner German, we've spent over six months considering this opt-in ordinance. We've had a great deal of debate and discussion about it. We've had this particular ordinance and its current version for months already, and we've talked about it many hours as well. I, I don't think we're rushing it at all. I think, and we're still not even rushing it, I mean, we're, there's still much to be discussed and deliberated on, which thus, us opting in and approving just this amendment to the Code of Ordinances does not preclude that further discussion. It does not preclude that further fine tuning of the zoning or the application process. Those conversations will still be had, and we can fine tune it to, more to your liking, Commissioner German. Not only do I think that opting in is serving the will of the people, because I'm, have the utmost confidence that our constituents are overwhelmingly supportive of us opting into this, but I think it is, it behooves us just from a public health perspective of better accommodating our patients. I do agree with Commissioner Turnquist that I would much prefer this to be a prescription-based, you go into the pharmacy, you get your dosage, it's right there labeled how to use it, you have only so many refills, or you have gaps between when you can refill. Yes, I would, I would love for medicinal marijuana to be treated the same way any other prescribed pharmacological, pharmacological substance is. Unfortunately, that's not the case now. We've got the system that we have, we have to operate within that system, and I think opting in moves us forward in a more compassionate way in helping our citizens and our patients get access to their medicine. And the caregiver system and the patient care system is not necessarily ideal for, for patients in general to get the information of the right dosage and the right strains for the right conditions, the right method in which the, the medicine is applied or taken, whether edible or vaped or smoked or topical. And that's what this system would allow more easily and readily available for, for our patient residents. And also, I do believe that medicinal marijuana is a tool to combat the opioid epidemic that is devastating our community. And for people that I've been hearing throughout Muskegon County, some people of influence, some people in powerful positions, talk about the opioid epidemic and complete disregard medicinal marijuana as a potential tool, that is disconcerting to me and borderline unconscionable when there is so much analysis and studies that have shown that medical marijuana is effective at treating chronic pain, and studies have shown that areas that have medicinal marijuana have shown ODs from opioids have declined. So this is critically important, not in terms of helping patients get medicine, but helping to save lives too, in my opinion. And I think it behooves us as a compassionate city, and I know, my fellow commissioners, you are compassionate. You do care about our citizens, and I know that, Commissioner German, you're very concerned about the youth and, and being abused, and similarly, Commissioner Rinsam Msivenga, concerned about abuse of the system. Any system can be abused. I, I don't think the answer to abuse is just to get rid of the system. Now, welfare is abused, but we don't just get rid of welfare to combat that abuse. You work on tweaking it, improving it, and undermining that abuse, and I think that's something that we can take to Lansing and talk to them about improving the system. But in the meantime, we have to operate within that system, and I think this is the good way forward to, to take care of our citizens and, and yes, have investment, have areas of our city that have long languished, become developed, become improved, fight the blight, promote social equity. These are things that we can accomplish with this. So I know Commissioner Turnquist and Commissioner German, you've already voiced opposition to opting in tonight and said you're not going to vote for it. I, I strongly encourage both of you to still reconsider and, and support this, and then work together on the zoning and the application process. But I do appreciate, I know many of you have spent a great deal of time on this over many months in talking to constituents and reading up on it. I think we've all taken this seriously, and I appreciate each and every one of you giving it careful attention and its due diligence. And so I just hope tonight we demonstrate progressive leadership and compassion. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other closing comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
No.
Commissioner Rinsam Msivenga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
No.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
No.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We've got much work to do.
Does require a second reading.
It will. Yep. Is there a Ms. Adams in the house? Ms. Adams?
Uh, we, Ms. Adams is here tonight to receive a resolution as we will be honoring women veterans this week. How old do we have?
My name is Dr. Janet Fisher.
Dr. Fisher?
Nine days away from being born in DC.
Oh. She's from DC.
All three of them were.
Really? When did you all get in?
Just here.
Okay. And you are?
Ms. Smith.
Ms. Smith?
My name is Moji Soli. Do you ask me on the board?
Very good. Thank you very much. Well, what a pleasure, and it'll be a pleasure to see you again on Thursday morning and all. Women veterans have a close place in my heart. World War II, there was a woman from Muskegon that served in the Women's Army Corps, and at the close of the war, she was selected as a model for a portrait that was painted to represent all women that had served during World War II. And she also got elected, chosen as Ms. America.
Oh.
Veteran, not the Ms. America, but Ms. Ms. America veteran. That young lady happens to be my late aunt.
Oh.
Angela Gorg. I'm still trying to find out where the portrait made it, but we, but we saw that it was restored in the past five years because it was, it ended up in the Smithsonian originally, went down to Florida, got caught in a hurricane, needed to be restored, and I think it's in the Air Museum in Florida. So, yes, dear to my heart, dear to my heart. So it is my pleasure to present this resolution. Whereas Muskegon, Michigan salutes and remembers the many American female veterans who have courageously and honorably served in the military on behalf of our nation, and whereas women have formerly been a part of the United States Armed Forces since the inception of the Army Nurse Corps in 1901, and have proudly served alongside and supported our nation's military since the American Revolution, and whereas with over 2 million of the veteran population being women, and 20% of today's military comprised of women, the women veterans community is the fastest growing subset of American veterans, and whereas on this day we commemorate the women who fearlessly served our nation, we honor our female veterans, their families for their remarkable service, sacrifice, and outstanding contributions to our nation. Whereas the Muskegon City Commission hereby recognize, recognizes our nation's women veterans by declaring April 26th of each year as Women's Veterans Day in Muskegon, now therefore be it resolved that I, Stephen J. Galrin, Mayor of the City of Muskegon, do hereby proclaim April 26th, 2018 as Women's Veteran Day in Muskegon, and encourage all City of Muskegon citizens to recognize the courage and contributions of generations of American servicewomen and their families who have proudly served our great state and nation, doing their part to protect our land, people, freedoms, and legacy.
I just want to take a moment to say thank you to the city council. I'm trying to hold this back because it's a momentous moment for us, first being the very first city in the state to recognize female veterans in this way. We're working on a state, and we're going to have that by June, but I just want to say that we are often a forgotten and considered an invisible hero. So on behalf of Wink and all the female veterans, the over 2 million strong and rising that we have, I want to say thank you for taking the lead and taking a step forward to bring us to the limelight. So thank you.
Excuse me a minute while I take care of my runny nose. Are there any other issues to come before the body this evening? If not, then I'd like to open up for public comment. Hey, Mike, you still here?
Yeah.
Come on up. I'll give you a whole three minutes, like everybody else.
Michael Hawes, 903 Turner Avenue. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I need some help. Your city was kind enough to do a demolition across the street from me. That just happened a few weeks ago. I've been in the process of trying to find out how to adopt that lot while it's in limbo before the auction, because I'd like to put a garden in. Even if I have to haul the water across the street, I'll do it, but I've been upstairs twice. The gal that I needed to talk to has either gone The gal that I needed to talk to has either gone to lunch or wasn't there. The other gal told me that I had to see my neighborhood association president. I'm going, why would the neighborhood association have anything to do with it? But anyhow, I tried to contact her and have not gotten a phone call back from her either. How do I adopt a law? What's the requirements? Well, I have to have insurance on it for liability. I don't know. These are questions I got, and nobody seems to want to talk with me. Help me.
Have you ever seen this guy before?
Yeah.
Okay, same after.
Thank you.
He runs the show.
Okay.
Okay.
Have a wonderful night.
Thank you, Mike. Great to see you. Diane Foster.
Hi.
Hi, Diane.
Diane Foster, 135 Ottawa Street, Muskegon, Michigan. I thought that I would tell you that I thought the idea of having, I don't think we need a commission, an advisory board might be helpful. There are people that know a lot about this law because they haven't had anything else to do but study it for the last 10 years, so it might be helpful if they could help you put a little input in this. I can tell you that any child can use this at any age with two doctors' consent. So, that's, if you have any questions on age, that's how it rolls. At 18, they can use it without a caregiver being a parent on their own. Once they turn 18, they become their own care person. So, that's, I want to clear that up for you. With the legalization, though, that changes it to 21. For legalization, if it's fully legalized, people will have to be 21 to purchase marijuana, and it will not be medical marijuana. It will be recreational, which I'm having the hardest time with this whole mess because we can't even get the medical straight in our state, and now we want to, they want to implode a lot of things that I just don't understand. I came into this with a real, wholehearted medical look at this. And not that I don't understand the recreational to an extent, I do. I really do understand it. But I also understand that I just read a magazine from the Michigan Medical Marijuana Report from our state, and Colorado had 12 dispensaries closed down and 13 people arrested just recently. So, I have a hard time because as much as the state's on board with medical, the feds are not on board with anything else. And when you start getting past the number 99 plant count, you start talking about federal government. So, I'm, this is where my problem is, is that as much as they say the federal government is not going to bother anybody, that's yet to be proven because they're doing it all the time. And it is selective, yes. And for whatever reason, they decide that a specific company is not doing what it's supposed to be doing. I'm not really sure how all of that rolls in Colorado. But our, our laws are so unclear, there is no clarity. There's such a lot, there's, there's so little clarity right now when it comes to the new program, the old program, the legalization program. I think that they have more on their plate than they know what to do with up there in Lansing. And no offense, but I don't think it would hurt one bit if we had an advisory committee, not someone that makes rules, but just helps to put this into some perspective for all of us. And as far as anything else goes, I'm just about the patients. I want what's best for them, period. Bottom line, I want what's best for the patients. So, however we can achieve that, that would be really wonderful. And that's all I have to say for the evening, and you guys have a good night and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I may just comment. Thank you, thank you, Diane, for your insights and, you know, sharing particularly with regard to youth. When we talk about keeping out of hands of youth, it's not keeping out of hands of youth in need of it, because certain, you certainly need medicinal marijuana and get great benefit and relief from it. I've, I've seen and read about many children with epilepsy who it's through cannabinoid oil and tinctures that they're able to live seizure-free lives. And so, this is really about quality of life improvement and helping people of all ages. But I've seen the benefit from, yeah. No, I appreciate that. I appreciate that, because I think that was an important distinction or, just to clarify when we were talking about youth.
Okay.
So, thank you.
I don't think my driveway should be nicer than the roads we drive on.
Phyllis Lautermill.
Hi, Commissioner. How are you guys doing?
Good, thank you.
Phyllis Lautermill, 2964 Lake Shore Drive, Muskegon. Opt in if that's what you want, I'm glad we did it. But I hope that, and I'm going to back this up about a sleeping giant, because I'm hearing us talk about things that we've been asking for, forever, inclusion, diversity. And if you ride in your city and you look at all this development, I've been talking to commissioners for the last couple of days, you should be scared as hell that there's no diversity in this, in your community when it comes to development. It's not, it's not inclusion. So, at first, I was kind of like wondering what was going on there, but then tonight, you surprised me. You woke up, you recognized that in this industry, it is huge, you're right, that you have to have inclusions, and you're right. You can't just have exclusivity. It can't just be this. It has to be everything. It has to be the job development down here, it has to be all the housing you're doing, it has to be everything. But it also has to look at this. If you don't know what others' community do, because they are doing tremendous things, they are communities that do have inclusion, they are developing, they are doing social things, and they're just not giving monies to a, a community base. They're developing jobs, they're doing collaboratives, meaning that there's three companies together, because this is kind of money that if you don't do collaboratives, your community can't play. So, people have gotten together with five or six people, and they're developing business around that. So, in some of these communities, they're looking at collaboratives, how you can entice another company to mentor it with a small business and create all type of opportunities. So, I'm hoping that since we have opted in, that we will look at it from a broad perspective, that you would definitely study other communities like Detroit and look at what they're doing. Look at how they're building those areas and look at, and bring people in that can educate us and listen. So, I'm very proud of you that tonight we have stepped up, that we recognize that there needs to be an inclusion in our community. We need to make sure people are developing jobs and training so that they can work. So, I'm very proud that we've gotten there. So, now that we've gotten there, let's stay there. Let's actually do something about it.
Thank you, Phyllis. Are there any other members of the public that would like to? Well, I guess. Hi, come on up.
Roberta King, 3393 Fulton Avenue, Muskegon. Can I talk about my dirt road? I hate living on a dirt road. You know how embarrassing it is to tell people you just turned down the dirt road? No, thank you. I really appreciate you moving this forward, voting yes, taking a leap of faith in the marijuana system that Michigan has set up. I believe that there is room for flexibility in your permitting process, and I hope that will create jobs for people within the city of Muskegon. Just thank you very much for your persistence and for listening to me nag for the last year and sending you things that I'm sure you read, you know, faithfully, but I appreciate every vote, yes and no, on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And as far as your dirt road?
Yes.
That's just part of the quaintness of living in the old fishing village.
It is. Just darn quaint.
Thanks for burning. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the body before we go home dinner? Commissioner German, you had a closing remark?
Well, no, no. I'd like to recognize Mr. Eric Foster, who's with a consulting company, and he's pretty knowledgeable on the issues of cannabis also. Would you like to come up and speak, sir? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Let me just get your name and address, sir, and you got three minutes.
Okay. Eric Foster. I am at 4969 Campus Hill Drive, apartment C202, Oklahoma State, Michigan, and I'm with Cannabis Practice Group, and I'm also a part of the East-West Alliance in partnership with Sparrow Consulting. And yes, the, glad that the community was able to get the first step of opting in. Commissioner German did raise a number of great points regarding things that can be factored in going forward with respect to making amendments and modifications to strengthen the opportunities for community benefits and opt-in. There are various specific sections of the PA 281 that allow for communities to add additional language to address some of the concerns that were raised. And then also, too, there are with the new emergency rules and governing law, a number of specific requirements for access, for distribution, for sale, for registering, for getting a card, that do go to and prevent some of the concerns about access to youth as well as abuse within the system. The state has done a great job of setting up a strong structure, which is also at the same time driving out a lot of bad actors in the industry, which is good. This is something that we want positive actors, and we want a positive economic benefit, because not only does the community get the excise tax, but you also get the corporate income tax that you levy, you get property taxes that you levy, and you can even add additional fee structures if you desire to create additional positive programming for the city, help with some of your housing rehab programs, help with park issues. So, you know, we're glad to be a resource to help the commission going forward in how do you continue to improve this living, evolving document as well as this program in pharmaceutical healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you again, and have safe travels.
Thank you.
Any other takers? Vice Mayor?
I'd just like to say that I am for medical marijuana. I just wanted to make sure that I'm not for the abuse, and I want to make sure that we do or that we are inclusive as we go forward. I know a lot of times we say this, but it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't happen. There's just ways around things, and if we're going to move forward with this, I would like to move forward with the community as a whole. I think if there are people of color that want to get involved in this journey, that we should not put obstacles in their way so they can't be involved in this, because I know there are people who do want to be involved, and we just got to make sure that we go forward in a equal opportunistic way.
Thank you, sir. That takes us to the next step, I think.
And if there's nothing else, I move to adjourn.
Support. It's been moved by the vice mayor, so I can have my Commissioner Johnson to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out, folks.
Eric just said something I had to take in.